I call our March 6 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Before we get to the approval of the minutes, I'd like Hunter to introduce our new secretary.
Yes, we do. Our planning clerk and your secretary is first day on the job today, so please be kind. Don't run her off the first night, but Cindy Boudreaux, we are happy to have her and hope she'll be back tomorrow.
(laughing) Cindy, welcome Cindy.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and turn my phone ringer off. I hope everybody else will join me and do the same. And the first item on our agenda today is the approval of minutes. If there are any changes, please bring those up. If not, I will accept a motion to approve as written.
Move to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. First item on the agenda, we have an 11-52-11 request for C Spire to add some fiber cable, 9,800 feet of it.
Thank you. This is our standard utility review. There's really nothing abnormal about this one. We usually show you where the map is. You know, really what we kinda ask twofold for these utility reviews, is there anything you see unique about some of these areas that we may need to be aware of? I know Chairman likes to give an example. Somebody said, "Hey, that's not actually a right-of-way before." That saves people a lot of headache. But we also do memorialize some comments in these meetings. A repetitive "nothing has changed" this month. But this is Summer Lake, pretty much subdivision in totality, phases one and two. And, you know, that highlighted item is something we want to make sure everybody's aware of. We're limited to 750 feet of locations a day. And there is some uniqueness with this one. I'm gonna flip back for a second. This is Summer Lake, which at its onset sought to save a lot of really large trees. I mean, if you drive through there, it's very obvious. We've got stand-up curbs and a lot of really large, mostly live oak trees. So we would ask special care be given to this, and any damage to those trees, you'll see number two. Is the contractor's responsible for that. So our right-of-way inspector will be working with them to make sure they're using the appropriate methodologies when they come in contact with some of those large trees. But with that said, we do recommend approval of these with these 10 conditions listed on the screen. And for the sake of redundancy, I won't read every one of those.
All right, thank you Hunter. Is anybody here on behalf of C Spire? This is not a public hearing. Does anybody have any questions or comments with the public on this? All right, Commissioners?
I move to approve. You are 23.03, subject to staff recommendations.
Aye, second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve, subject to staff recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, we have a public hearing to consider a request of Robert and Renee Ritt for approval of a two-lot minor subdivision. The property is located at the northeast corner of North Bayview Street and Blakeney Avenue.
Good evening, guys. So as you said, this is a two-lot minor subdivision. Property is zoned R2. On the screen, left, you can see the zoning map. On the right is the aerial. The aerial doesn't quite show the current conditions. The house that is shown has been removed. On the screen, there's a clip of what the plat would look like. Some general comments, all the lots front on a publicly maintained road, meet the lot size requirements, property is vacant, existing flow patterns will not be changed for drainage, electric, water, sewer, and gas are all provided by the City of Fairhope, telephone is provided by AT&amp;T. Now, based off the utilities, the flow model that the applicant's engineer provided stated that an automatic fire sprinkler system meets the current ISO fire suppression rating, according to ISO ratings. The city requires flow models to meet International Fire Code or IFC, and this does not. Also, currently, state law prohibits building departments from requiring sprinkler systems in one-family or two-family dwellings. The connectivity, sidewalks do not exist along either of the roads adjacent to the subdivision. The subdivision regulations do allow for the planning commission to allow a 10-foot easement instead of installing the sidewalks, and due to absence of sidewalks or natural environment, the applicant is asking for a waiver from installing sidewalks or providing the 10-foot easement. The waiver requests were included in the packet. Staff does not support the waiver request. The applicant is also asking for a waiver for providing 15-foot required drainage and utility easements along the property lines. Staff does not support this waiver request either. Some additional comments, as I said, the house had been removed, but there's currently an accessory structure that exists on the easterly side of the lot. Structure is currently non-conforming. Staff's recommendation is the new lot and structure need to be brought into conformance, and that structure removed. Structure will also be inside the drainage and utility easement without approval of the waiver request. The structure actually should have been removed at the same time that the house was. The waiver standards are on the left, 1 through 6. And again, the waiver requests are to not put in the 15-foot utility drainage easement and install in a sidewalk or provide an easement. According to the waiver standards, staff does not feel that they meet them. The recommendation, and we will need to vote on the waiver request separately from the recommendation, the waiver request for not providing sidewalks or sidewalk easement, the waiver request for not providing utility or drainage easements, staff recommends approval of case SD 23.01 with the following conditions, that the accessory structure is removed, the easements for utilities, drainage, and sidewalk are added to the plat, and a solution to the fire flow is reached between the city and the owner. And the applicant is with us here tonight, also has some slides and a presentation to present.
My name is Robert Ritt, or Bob Ritt, I go by Bob Ritt. And my wife here is tonight with us, Renee Ritt. We bought this property with the intent of building a house and retiring here in Fairhope. We have a number of friends in Fairhope, and we fell in love with it after a number of visits coming into Fairhope. So I did, you know, excuse me, because I don't know the protocol here, but I did make a printout of our presentation tonight, and I thought that you would have a copy of them. And I'll try to be brief. So as Mike said, it is a minor subdivision. It is an R2 zoning, it's in the bluff area. The lots meet the width and square footage requirements, and the setbacks are defined in R2. I will point out, the accessory structure setbacks are five feet on the side and rear. So there's four topics to discuss, as Mike mentioned, sidewalks, utility easements, fire flow tests, and the existing garage structure. So currently, in the bluff area, it does not have sidewalks in the entire bluff area, not just on our street, but once you go back into the entire bluff area, there are no sidewalks. The adjoining plots do not have any sidewalks. And the sidewalks, if we put them in, wouldn't serve the intended purpose, because they would go to essentially nowhere. There's not a continuing sidewalk. The existing right-of-ways are adequately designed to accommodate sidewalks, and I'll go through that. So we asked for a waiver to construct the sidewalks. So here's a few pictures down Blakeney and Bayview. You can see there's no sidewalks in those areas. So the quotation that you've been given there is in the subdivision regulations, Article 5, Section D7, exceptions to street standards for, and what's quoted is Item B. It says, "If so requested, the commission may waive the requirement to install sidewalks if in the discretion of the commission sidewalks will not serve the intended..."
Sir, if I can interrupt you, the city is not requiring the sidewalks be built. We do quite often in cases when there are no sidewalks close by or adjacent, and it seems like an area where there might not be sidewalks in any reasonably foreseen future, we very often waive the sidewalk request.
Okay.
We're not, you know, the city is not asking that we don't accept the sidewalk waiver. They're saying that we require a right-of-way instead, which we do all the time.
Correct. They're requiring a right-of-way on the property line instead of the right-of-way.
Correct. And that's what we do when we don't require the sidewalk to be built. We do that as option B. If you'd rather build the sidewalk, we won't require the right-of-way. But if you're not gonna build the sidewalk, we pretty much carte blanche, always require the right-of-way, just in case, because even though in the foreseeable future, you know, the near foreseeable future, you don't, we don't see where that would be an issue. You never know 30 years from now, and sometimes in places that are older where you have, you know, different types of right-of-ways, you know, prescriptive, et cetera, it's nice to have those.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to be clear, it's a 10-foot easement along the property line, not an actual, not acquiring right-of-way additional there.
Correct. Yeah, that's just the standard protocol of what we do.
I understand, but if I could finish?
Sure.
Let me go through. So it's basically saying, it says, "In such cases, the commission will require sidewalk easement along the marginal lot adjacent to the right-of-way of the installation of sidewalks." And so what I've shown here is the property layout in green, here the property layout, and then, oh. And then in the green area is the right-of-way. There's currently 50-foot right-of-way along Bayview. Along Blakeney, it's 50-foot or greater, actually. It's actually wider, so it's variable right-of-way along there. So what they're asking to do is I place the blue line of a five-foot wide sidewalk inside the property line, and you can see it conflicts with the trees in that area. So the question is, why would you do that? Well, if you go back and you read the regulations in Part A, Part A and Part B need to be read together. And Part A says, "Sidewalks are not required to be installed in the right-of-way where all lots front on and have access to existing streets or road. And," this is important, "and, "such streets or roads are under the jurisdiction of another governing authority, for example, a city or state. And that authority has prohibited the installation of sidewalks in the right-of-way." So A and B need to be read together, and that's really not the case here. So when you go into the subdivision regulations and you look at the subdivision regulations, it says the right-of-way is a strip, it's to include the sidewalk. You look at the definition of the sidewalk, it says it's supposed to be the portion in the right-of-way. When you do subdivide, it does trigger the requirement in the subdivision regulations, Part 5A, that says the streets need to be brought up to the right-of-way standard. And we acknowledge that. So when we look at, when we go back into the subdivision regulations, and it says, "What are the requirements for an R2 single-family street 50 feet wide?" It's supposed to have a planting strip of eight feet and a sidewalk of five feet, in addition to the street that's 24 feet. So what does that look like? So if we were to lay that around the property line with the roads, you can see, I said, an eight-foot property, or eight-foot planting strip back, the five-foot sidewalk, there's still another six foot before the property line, and the same on the other side. So between the road and the right-of-way is 19 feet along Blakeney, and it's 23 to 25 feet, excuse me, 23 to 25 feet along Blakeney, 19 feet along Bayview. So I'm just asking to waive it. If we need to put them in, we'll put them in.
(inaudible) You have to vote on the waivers.
So the next one, I'm gonna talk about utility and drainage easements. So first, this is an old area subdivision. All the utilities run along those street right-of-ways that we have there. And we've lived in a subdivision for years, and we've had utility easements along the back. It makes perfect sense when you're developing a new neighborhood to have utility easements along the back. It's a very efficient means for construction. But in this case, that's not. This is an older area, and the utilities run along the streets. Next to our property on either side, there are existing houses on both of those structures, so there's no need to feed utility easements to those two adjacent lots. The easements would conflict with the existing garage structure, and also the setback on Lot 1. And the drainage easements are unnecessary due to the slope of the grade and the soil conditions. So again, it defines what a right-of-way is here in it, and defines what an easement. I guess the key part about an easement is, is that it needs to serve a public need, not a private need. And so there's no public need to run utilities across these two lots. So I worked with the City of Fairhope and contacted them, and there are utilities available both on Bayview and Blakeney to service the lots. I had to go back and get clarification from Ben Patterson, who I talked to, about how we would bring electricity into Lot 1. And he said, "Yes, it could be brought in along Bayview. It's at the owner's cost, and we realize that, and go underneath the road." So if you look at, here on this diagram, you can see there's a star, and that's the location of the picture, and if you look, you're looking north up Bayview there, 150 feet is an existing power pole and transformer right there. And that's where we would pull the power off of and bring it down to feed Lot 1 underneath Bayview. There's gas, sewer, and water already along Bayview. And along Blakeney, there's gas and electric, and I also have an air in here. There's water up here on Blakeney. In fact, the water meter for the old house is just to the left of the driveway there. So both these lots can be serviced with the existing utilities along the right-of-way, and there's no need to put future easements across there. If you were to put the easements across, I've drawn them here in blue, and you can see it totally consumes the garage structure underneath it. And also on Lot 1, on the north side, the 10-foot setback would be within the 15-foot utility easement. From drainage standpoint, the lot's slope 7% grade, so these are not flat lots. They slope from the southeast to the northwest, or north-northwest. There's been no standing water on the lots. I had a geotechnical survey performed on the lots. They penetrated 22 to 26 feet deep. There was no groundwater encountered. The soil is very loose, to loose condition, so it provides good drainage, and you're right there by the bluff, so you're in an elevation of 55 to 69 feet above sea level. So there's no standing water. So we're asking for a waiver to put in the utility easements because utilities can be serviced along the right-of-ways. And the fire hydrant flow test, so we did have a fire hydrant flow test. We achieved the equivalent of 448 gallons per minute at 20 PSI. So to meet the ISO fire suppression code, you need 500 gallons per minute at 20 PSI. So it's approximately 10% short on the flow rate. And that's the current state. That's for the whole bluff area. And as Mike pointed out, the law does not prohibit building departments from requiring sprinkler systems in one or two-family homes. But I've told Mike, we'll work with them to, because we want to make sure that the property meets. The next one is the garage structure. So some of the correspondence we've had with the planning staff is that the accessory building on Lot 2 needs to be removed. It is a non-conforming structure and does not comply with the zoning ordinance. You may request it to remain from the planning commission. Be aware that if the building does remain, it'll require it to be brought up to fire code for the proximity of the property lines. So if we look at it, this is a picture of the garage structure. You can see it's still in good condition. I've drawn a picture here, the light green shaded that I've drawn around the edge is the area, approximate area where it's less than five feet from the property line. And the back corner there, the closest corner, it's approximately three feet away from the The Fairhope zoning ordinance does allow structures that were legally constructed prior to the adoption of this ordinance, but which could not be constructed under the terms of this, are considered legal non-conforming structures. And we acknowledge that. That would be a legal non-conforming structure. However, the structure can remain in place, but it cannot be changed in any size, height, or whatever, and we understand that. So our contention is, is that the garage is a legal non-conforming structure, and we ask that it remain. So far as the fire codes aspect of it, we've quizzed what portion of the fire code the staff is asserting the garage doesn't meet. We haven't received a reply to that. The garage does meet the separation distance requirements as defined in the zoning ordinance, the 10-foot minimum between a principal and an accessory building, and the National Fire Code states sprinklers shall not be put into a garage. That's all I have. Thank you, thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir. All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, but anybody wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir. If you come up and state your name and your address for our first-day secretary, because it will go on our public record.
My name's Bob Comstock. I live in the bluff neighborhood. As far as I'm aware, we don't have any utility or drainage easements throughout the neighborhood. Most of the neighborhood has alleys, where I live doesn't. And I'm very supportive, along with a number of other neighbors that we've talked to, of the proposal.
Okay.
Okay, yes, sir.
What was the address?
My address?
Yes, sir.
114 North Bayview.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else like to speak to this item? All right, in that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Mike, can you explain the staff's position on the, why you wouldn't support the waivers of the, I don't know, can we even, Chris, on the waiver of the house being taken down, I mean, do we even have the ability to allow a waiver for that?
For the accessory structure? No, I mean, it's under the zoning ordinance, so that would be in ordinance and...
In fact, actually, an accessory structure can only exist as an accessory to a principal structure.
I was wondering if we even had the authority to do that? I don't think we even had the authority to do that if we wanted to or not.
The city council's final decision-maker on the zoning ordinance. Now, this is a subdivision request before you, but to grant that waiver, I think there would be potentially zoning implications, which would require council approval.
Right. That's what I was getting at. I didn't even know if we had the ability to do that, if we wanted to do that. On the utility easements, is that something that's normally required? If you could explain.
It is. We, for the future, we don't know, there's an existing telecommunications cable that runs through the property that's being abandoned now, but there is, we don't know what's gonna be in the future, especially with drainage. We have several areas that have been developed, and then with infill development, larger lots being split into two, where we may have had eight houses at one time, now those lots, there's now 12 houses or 13 that have been built, and the water has to have somewhere to go. So it's just, if we're not gonna do it for all of them, you know, this is the route we want to go, then we need to look at changing, possibly what the regulations say, for minor subdivisions when it comes to the easements.
Because some of the issue isn't just getting the water off of those houses, it's to keep from blowing the bluff out and slow the water down, if you have a need for that as well, I would think.
And it's also making sure things are not built within that, so water coming to the site has a chance to move on through. And as this is one large lot, and historic, there wasn't the drainage easements, but as we, the infill development is something to consider, and I think there's been problems and the reason this is there and why it's being requested on this case is...
Mr. Chairman, if I may speak, on the very first agenda item tonight was a utility review. And if you look at Summer Lake, fibers running up and down every street and across every intersection, and if we start picking, using what the utility, in this case, fiber, may be needed in the bluff area in the future, and we don't have a path to go down some of these streets, we're doing a disservice, and we're never gonna get the rights in the future to do that. And so it's not just drainage, which, you know, we run into issues that, they don't reveal themselves for 20 or 30 years sometimes on drainage. And utilities, who knew 30 years ago that fiber optic would be laid everywhere that is being laid now? And I think that the rules are in place to, so that we're forward-looking, and we're not having to look back, and we're making plans for the future, for the unknown. And for that reason, I would be opposed to relaxing the utility...
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sir.
One of the things we deal with in the building department are, you know, I tell folks all the time, the top three complaints we get are drainage, drainage, and drainage. So, and we're having an issue, especially in the fruit and nut area, where we're taking historically two lots of records, splitting in half and putting two houses there. You are significantly increasing the impervious surface on that lot, and routinely during building, during inspections and prior to COs, with the lots that we have easements on, we routinely require folks to put either swells or berms to prevent water from rolling off roofs and aiming straight towards the houses next door, and we use them all the time. So, you know, and I'll also say, I know that we did a very significant drainage project, like right across the street from you, two years ago, maybe three years ago. And it was a significant project because of the volume and the way that water runs in that area. And so we're taking what was one house on a major lot, we're splitting it in half, and we're gonna have two at some point. It's utility easements, as Mr. Burrell said, but it's also drainage, because that's the thing that I deal with all the time. So I would be very much in favor, I'd be against a waiver to remove those easements, because these are things that come up. It may not be something that you foresee, but it's stuff that I see every day. I get these calls from folks all the time.
Well, think of the ground on the backside of the bluff district.
Yeah.
You know, with the gully right there by the water department.
Yeah. I mean, we've gotten to a point now in the fruit and nut where we are requiring folks in some areas where there are no easements to put LID techniques on the sides of their house. They're having to dig in and do subsurface detention, they're having to put rain gardens, they're having to do these things, where we don't have easements to direct this water. In this case, we're kinda starting with a fresh canvas on a subdivision. We have the opportunity to put those easements in, and I really think it would be poor of us not to require it at this time, where we know we may eventually need them. I mean, as these subdivisions or as these older areas redevelop, and we have multiple houses going where there was a single house, we've got, you know, from our standpoint, looking ahead and having at least the ability to deal with that when it comes up is very important. And like I said, I deal with that daily. And like I said, I deal with that daily. So it's, you know, it's not out of the realm of, you know, I'd actually say it's a, it's a probable thing. At some point in the future, we're going to get a call from somebody about drainage.
And just while we're talking about the easements, I do want to touch on the sidewalk easement. You know, really, in a lot of areas like this, and Mr. Ritt said it, there's trees, you know, they're on property lines, there's, there's a lot of mature landscape in there, utilities. You know, in this area, while he's certainly correct about when we're in unzoned areas and we had the jurisdiction, or you're dealing with maybe a county right of way that does not want that. Really, the easement, as we discussed here, if we need a future sidewalk, it can move in and out of right of way and within that 10 feet to avoid trees, to do some of those things. So, like, we do not have an immediate plan to do a sidewalk, but if that's a city project in the future, it gives us that flexibility to not be hamstrung. As you all know, our right of ways are getting really cramped, especially the older 50-foot ones with the drainage, the sewer, the water, all the fiber, copper's still in there. So that gives us the flexibility to move in and out of those without maybe having to take down trees to put a sidewalk in.
I've got no problem with a sidewalk waiver right here.
No. Installing, I'd rather have the easement in lieu of installing.
But I don't think we've ever done a waiver to an easement. I mean, if it never makes sense to build, just never build it.
Yeah, the, Mr. Chairman, the other thing about utilities, and especially in our, it's a 50-foot right of way there, we are, you know, our right of way inspectors are responding daily with, I don't know how many thousands and thousands of linear feet of fibers being installed in town right now. Our right of ways are packed between all of our utilities that are there. It is absolutely normal in subdivisions to have an easement up into the private property because the telecom contractors do not want to get in the right of way because they consistently hit water and sewer lines. We have found it all over town. So if we can get them up on the private property in an easement, that is very much the preferred method.
Mr. Chairman, I, since Art's not here, I just, what you do for one, you have to do for all.
Right.
And that's a bad precedent to start.
And one other point of clarification, Eric, if I may speak.
Sure.
Talk to me about, correct me. Mr. Ritt did reference a separation, and it gets, a lot of times, we blend some things together. In our ordinances, in our setbacks, a lot of times it's about separation. But in fire code that was referenced, that is distance to a property line, not separation to another building. So when we talk about fire five foot within a property line, that is where the fire ratings of buildings come in. So that's the difference. It may be 10-foot from the next building, but, but the fire code references, and I, do you remember what section that is?
Yeah, I mean, and ISO is referenced a lot in applications. ISO is insurance services, and that has to do with insurance ratings. The, the distance between buildings has to do, that's with the, the insurance industry rating the fire protection of those structures by providing room theoretically for a fire truck or a fast attack truck to be able to get in between the buildings. But that's a private, that is not a code, an adopted code. The International Fire Code calls it fire separation distance, and it is from a property line to the structure. Regardless, it does not take into account what is on an adjacent property or how far a building is. So, you know, from, from what we adopt and enforce, it's going to be the fire separation distance from the property line or the new property line that's created to the actual wall of the structure. You know, the, the distance between that or a building on an adjacent property is, you know, according to the code, that's irrelevant. They're, they're going to judge it based on what is on that parcel that we're talking about.
Mr. Chairman, one, one more comment on the sidewalks as well. Although this, the bluff area is a very old and established neighborhood, there's a lot of older, well-established neighborhoods in Fairhope that I can tell you that five years ago, nobody thought that there would be a sidewalk there. If you talk about Fairwood Boulevard, you know, very well-established neighborhood, and we just approved, you know, thousands and thousands of feet of sidewalk, of sidewalk along Fairwood Boulevard, something that I'm telling you was on nobody's radar five years ago. And as our city gets more crowded, you know, walkability becomes an issue. It's, it's a, it's a big thing now, and, and we're adding more and more sidewalks, not fewer. And I would hate to take away any opportunity to, to put a sidewalk there in, in the future.
Good point. Nichols is...
And I understand that there's right of way, you know, across the street, but I also think that people shy away from putting things on the, the bayside as well.
Yeah.
I have a question real quick. Why was the garage not removed with the, when that, when he chose to remove the house? And what do we, how do we go from making sure that those accessory dwellings are not, like, building permits don't protect that?
It was, when reviewed for a demolition permit, it was for the house only. And we didn't catch that the accessory structure wasn't included with that demolition permit until after everything was completed, and there was still a garage sitting and made it to a subdivision case.
All right. So we need Mike to vote on three items. First of all, the sidewalk waiver request. Secondly, the drainage and easement, utility easement and drainage request. And then finally, the actual subdivision itself.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And the, and the staff recommendation on the sub, on the, on the subdivision approval says the accessory structure is removed, easements for utility, drainage, and sidewalks are added to the plat and a solution for the fire flow between the city. It doesn't say anything about the sidewalks, but that's going to be voted on separately.
Well, that first condition says easements that include the sidewalk easement?
Yes, it does. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Depending on how you vote on waiver, we might need to tweak those conditions.
Absolutely. All right. Commissioners, if there are no further questions, I will accept a motion first on the waiver of sidewalks, secondly, on the waiver of utility and drainage easements, and then thirdly, on the subdivision approval itself.
And to be clear, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, if, Commissioners, if you make a motion related to the sidewalk, if you'll specify first whether or not you're waiving the existence or the installation of the sidewalk, and then separately whether or not the sidewalk easement is going to be required on the plat, just for clarity of the record.
Okay. Could that be done in one motion?
It can, just, just so it's specified.
So let me also ask a question. If you were inclined to vote in the negative, would the lack of a motion or a second imply that there's no action taken?
It would, but really to clarify and based on...
You'd rather take a vote?
I'd rather take an affirmative vote, up or down, just so we're clear. And that is historically how the planning commission has handled those matters in the past as well.
Okay.
And just, it's going to be three separate motions, three separate votes, correct? Both, one for first waiver, second waiver, and then for final adoption, correct?
Correct.
And if you want to pause after the waiver decision for the change of the post-conditions and all those things?
All right. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the waiver for the installation of the sidewalks, but deny the waiver for the sidewalk easement.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second, and the motion is...
I was really thinking about what he said.
Yeah, no, the motion is to, to not require the sidewalks to be built, but to require a sidewalk easement. And so if you, if you vote aye, then you're not requiring the sidewalk to be built, but you are requiring the sidewalk easement. If you vote nay, then we're back to getting another motion. So, all in favor of requiring, all in favor of allowing a, of not requiring the sidewalk to be built, but requiring the sidewalk easement, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay. And Rebecca is going to abstain if she lives in that neighborhood. All right. Second item, we have a request to waive the utility and drainage easements. Do I have a motion to waive or to not waive the utility and drainage easements?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny the waiver request for utility and drainage easements?
I've got a motion to deny the waiver request for utility drainage eas, utility or drainage easements. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor to deny the request to waive the easement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And Rebecca, you are, once again, abstaining. All right. Final item is the, is the approval of the subdivision. So with those two votes, nothing would have to be changed for the staff recommendation. If somebody would like to...
Well, you still have the one condition of the fire flow agreement being reached, right?
No, sir.
That's one. Yeah, all three would still apply.
All three would, okay.
If you make that in the motion, all three would apply.
Or we would request that all three apply.
Can you tell me one more time why, why you recommend removing the accessory structure?
Yes, sir. So, an accessory structure has to exist to the principal structure. When you remove the principal structure, then you can't have an accessory structure. The accessory structure is closer than five feet from the property line as it exists right now regardless of the new lot lines or anything else. So that, we, we're now creating a subdivision and triggering that that has to be corrected in our stance. If my definition, you can't have an accessory structure without the principal.
But if you added a principal structure to the lot, it would become an accessory.
You also have the issue that the accessory structure is non-conforming. Say you're approving a subdivision with a non-conforming item.
Could the, could the, could the owner knock two feet off the back of the accessory structure and comply? I mean, I'm just looking, it looks like a huge expense to tear that down.
Have you looked at the picture?
Pardon?
I mean, if you looked at the picture, most of the structure would be on the other side.
I did look at it. Yep. I thought it was three feet from the line, right? About cover.
It's also in the drainage easement. Yeah, if you do that, then you're going to probably hitting the, bring the whole structure if you, if it's going to have you to find. So if there was a variance or something granted with that, then it would need to be brought into the code, which is going to trigger a 50%?
Yes, well, what it would require, if you've got that, it'll require that that building be fire rated on any wall that's less than five feet from a property line. You eliminate any doors or windows that are on that side, and you eliminate any ventilation to the attic on that side. And the theory is fire flashover from a building that might be on an adjacent property.
Well, I mean, if you're removing two, three feet, you changed the structure, you're running from back to the, the four of you.
I see what you're saying. I'm sorry. Yeah.
It's not square, you know, it, it doesn't, I don't know how that could be accommodated without before moving.
Yeah.
Could, could the garage be relocated three feet?
Yeah, that, that's... Yeah, I mean, what, what we're looking at as a subdivision is any existing nonconformities on that side. We would do that on anything else, and there is. And it's not created by the new lot lines, it is on the existing rear lot lines where it exists. Now, I believe it does, you know, it kind of jogs right there, the lot lines, what's actually...
Yeah, I don't even think we have the ability, the, I don't think we've got the authority to do this.
How was it allowed to begin with?
It should have been taken down.
It was one lot. It's in the middle of a lot. And now they're dividing it into two lots.
It was supposed to be taken down with the original.
As far as the rear goes, who knows what was required back there.
It was originally, yeah, 1920-something construction. I don't know.
It's been there a long time.
That's the old lot.
It's been there a long time.
So the garage and the principal structure existed many, many years ago, and why, how it got built where it is, could have been, zoning was different. I couldn't tell you how it got built at three feet, within five feet.
Yeah, because it's three feet from the old lot line, not, not any lot line that's created by the subdivision.
It's not created, but it's a new, it's a subdivision, so it's a new lot. The zoning ordinance seeks to remove incompatible land uses, and it calls all nonconformities an incompatible land use.
I think at one part, because we're the lot next door, I think at one time, the lot where we lived was part of that bigger lot, because, and then they built a house for a niece or a nephew or an aunt or something, and then they subdivided out. So the lot to the east was originally part of the lot that's currently being subdivided. Not that that has anything to do, but just for historical interest.
But a lot of these, I mean, this house was certainly built before the zoning ordinance. I can't remember the exact date, but zoning ordinance came into play 1950-ish?
No, like 60.
Okay. So...
It just, I get it. I'm, I want to follow all the rules, but it seems a little harsh on something that already exists.
Then you open it for one, you open it for all. And non-conforming accessory dualities.
So we have how many lots in the city with non-conforming structures? How many thousand?
Yeah, and how many times have we been bitten the butt with it, you know? I mean, look at the White Avenue Park. We, you know, Board of Adjustments allowed a nonconforming to go three feet off, and now we can't build a sidewalk along the park without a lawsuit. You know, I mean, it just, every time we, that they allow something like that, it comes back to haunt you. But I don't think we have the authority to do it anyway. I mean, I think if y'all want to pass an ordinance in City Council, allow it, I think y'all can do that. But I don't think, Chris, that we've got the authority to do it, do we?
No. I mean, it would be, have to be a variance by the Board of Adjustment, I would say, because it's a, it'd have to be, it's non-conforming as it currently sits with the change in the use, expansion of the use or expansion of the structure associated with the use. According to the zoning ordinance, all nonconformities have to be brought into conformance.
And now, our reviews on a variance is going to depend a lot of time on what is the hardship. Is it self-inflicted? Is it, you know, there's...
I'm just saying, I think it'd have to go to the Board of Adjustments, which I don't think could allow a variance due to the fact that this is a brand-new case. I legally don't think they can, we can't. So the only thing you can do is y'all could, you know, they could hold it off for 90 days and y'all could pass an ordinance to...
It would take a lot longer than that to...
To allow a change, but I wouldn't suggest doing that. But I just don't think we can do it if we want to or not.
Okay.
No further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve SD 23.01, subject to staff recommendations.
I've got a motion to approve, subject to staff, the subdivision's subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Abstain.
Oh, one abstention. Rebecca, same way.
She's on me.
Motion passes.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can just, I want to point out that the plat must be, it's a final plat, the minor subdivision preliminary final, has 120 days to be recorded. So, and before staff, before we can sign that plat, all the conditions must be met. So there's 120 days to have that structure removed before we can sign the plat. I just want to make sure that is very clear.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Yes, ma'am. Next item, oh, next item on the agenda is SD 2307, public hearing to consider the request of applicant SC Civil on behalf of Old Town Investments for a preliminary approval of Dragonfly Commons, a seven-unit multiple occupancy project. The property is 1.09 acres, located on the west side of Bishop Road, just north of Gafer. And if anybody feels like this is deja vu all over again...
Yes.
This is deja vu all over again.
That's right. So it was formerly known as the Bishop Road MOP, so it is a blast from the past. And that Bishop Road MOP was approved, but the final plat was not submitted with the two-year window, so here we are again. And it's essentially the same as it was in 2020. And this also will require a final MOP approval. That's what it looks like. There's your site plan, same. There are two buildings, one's a quadplex and one's a triplex. 22 parking spaces are provided in the site data table. Each unit will have a single car garage. There's also driveway parking, but the city does not recognize driveway parking. But what is the 15 outside parking spaces surpasses what's required. And there has not been a request for the city to accept the roads or utilities. And there has not been a request for the city to accept the roads or utilities. So, I already said that about the utilities, they should remain private inside the development. There are two detention ponds that are being created, mostly facing Bishop Road, they kind of go to the side, too. The engineer of record has provided a written statement stating that the ponds are designed conform to the requirements of the sub regs and all other applicable rules, regulations, laws, ordinances, and O and M plan has been provided and will be recorded, which will hold the owner responsible for routine inspections and maintenance. And the landscape plan is the same, it's been re-approved, there is a pine tree that needs to be removed in the driveway, which will require a permit. There's a sidewalk planned along Bishop Road, which is on the site thing, and then the green space requirements, it surpasses that, it's supposed to have zero point two-seven acres, it actually has zero point four-four acres. So, staff recommends approval of this without any conditions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, this will not go to City Council, these MOPs are considered subdivision approvals, so they, this will be the final vote here. Larry, you have anything to add?
Yeah, well, if y'all have questions, y'all have seen it before, so...
Okay.
I'm answering questions.
Larry's here, if anybody has any questions, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak to this item? All right, in that case, I'll close the public hearing and turn the meeting over to the commissioners.
The only thing I do, Larry, if you would, make sure, they provided an architectural plan, and it shows a one-hour firewall between units. Since it's a triplex and a quadplex, that means it has to be sprinklered with a one-hour wall. Let them know if they do a two-hour wall, that creates property line, now I have town homes, and that does not require a sprinkler. So, and, and it didn't show in the details, I want to make sure that they're aware of that. So, when it comes time for building permitting, I'll bring it up at that point, too, but if you'll, make sure that they're aware.
I have just commentary, blunt, if you look at this side elevation of this building, it looks like some others we've seen recently, there's not a window on it, you know, on, on the sides, and, and our zoning currently doesn't require that we have finestration or windows or doors or architectural human scaled elements, you know, that you, does it have a maximum expansive wall before you have to have those things? But in other cities, they do have requirements like that, you can only have so much wall before you have to break it up with a window, a door, an architecturally scaled element, and it may be something, you know, that we start to consider, so just as a note to the developer, also, you have, you know, two, if you think about an office, I mean, everybody wants the corner window, everybody wants the corner office with the view. You've, you've got bedrooms that can have windows for light from two sides, you know, how much would that increase the value of the unit for a few hundred dollars, maybe a couple thousand dollars to add a few more windows? So, just for future projects, something to consider, and something we could maybe consider with our zoning ordinance, just to improve the human scale of some of these projects.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we approve SD twenty-three point oh-seven.
I've got a motion to approve, is, are there any staff recommendations on that?
None.
I've got a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, SD twenty-three oh-eight, request for Dewberry Engineers on behalf of Live Vote Properties for approval of Parker Place subdivision, a four-lot minor subdivision. The property is approximately three-point acre, eight acres, and is at intersection of Parker, Woodham Lane Street. Hey, Hunter, is the, somebody turn the AC off for, do we need to open the door back there, or is it dis...
Go in back there.
He got it.
I just started, perfect. I don't want to fall, I've never fallen asleep in twenty-plus years up here, so I don't want this to be the first time.
Chairman, as you said, this is a four-lot minor subdivision, it's approximately three point eight acres, and it's zoned R1. You remember, this was recently rezoned from a PUD to R1, if it looked familiar to you, just a few months ago. On the left is the zoning map, and on the right is the aerial. I do want to point out that it is a heavily wooded lot, the applicant did provide a tree survey, and there is, with the lots being almost one acre in size, there's plenty of room inside those setbacks to be able to avoid and save, save the trees that are there. On the screen is the plat, see, there's three lots that front on Highway ninety-eight, and one lot that fronts on Parker Road. I do want to point out that there is provided a forty-foot by forty-foot ingress egress easement along lots one and four at the beginning, to act as a shared common drive easement, and lots one and four will be restricted to using that for access, therefore eliminating a possible curb cut on Lot One, close, right there at that intersection, for safety concerns. General comments, all the lots are within four hundred and fifty feet of fire hydrant and do meet the flow model, they front on a publicly maintained road, meet the lot size requirements, as I mentioned, what roads they front on. Sidewalks exist along Main Street, but will have to be installed along Parker Road, and Lot One and Four utilize the common drive. Drainage, the existing flow patterns are not being changed. Electric is provided Riviera, water provided by Daphne Utilities, gas and sewer Fairhoop, and communications by AT&amp;T. Said the sidewalk along Parker Road will be required to connect to the existing sidewalk on Main Street and extend east to the end of the property line. Staff recommends approval of SD twenty-three point oh-eight, Parker Place subdivision, with the following condition, that the sidewalk be installed along Parker Road, connecting to the sidewalk along Main Street. If there's any questions, applicant's representative is here tonight and can answer any questions for them.
I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Maybe this would be for the applicant, but when you're saying they're going to share the drive, is that that little square right on the property line, that little rectangle, I should say?
So, you'll see there's, yes, sir, that's the, that's the, that's the access easement for them to get on there. Once they get into their property, their driveways will have, that depicts, you know, which way to split off to get into Lot One and to stay in Lot Four.
And is ninety-eight there, is that a, that's a county road, isn't it? That's not state there, is it?
Correct, that's not a state road.
Eric, did the city take over maintenance of that?
That I'm not, I don't know that we go that far down, because now you're, aside from this, you're starting to get into county, unzoned, or zone county?
We took over maintenance of Parker Road from the county.
Parker Road is ours.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't answer that one.
I believe that section of Main Street is still bowling counties right away.
Okay.
Okay. I was just asking.
I thought maybe they had, had, had...
I don't have my mic.
Turned it over because of the triangle property being purchased by the city, that's all city property adjacent to that now.
I don't recall here, recently us taking that over, or having any review on that.
Might have been a while.
So, I can, I can verify.
I don't know that it materially affects anything.
It's not germane to this, I was just wondering about the curb cut question, that's what I was wondering at and getting at, that, you know, I have no problem with this design, it looks great, meets all the regs, but, man, if I had teenage kids, I wouldn't buy Lot Two or Three if he gave them to me free. I just worry about getting T-boned coming out of there on that, you know, curve from that hill right there.
That is correct.
And I was just wondering if the state would have anything to do about the, about the curb cuts, it'd be, I guess, without making it a major subdivision, a lot of additional cost, you couldn't, and people probably wouldn't want to enter their lots to the rear back there, you know, most people want to show it, but...
What, one solution to that would be, instead of having the, you know, that forty by forty easement there just for lots one and four, would be extending that easement down the proper, the rear properties of one and two, and down the side of four, to essentially act as rear-loaded access to all four of those lots, would be a potential that would solve that problem and eliminate the road cuts there at that corner of Parker Road and Main Street, keep the driveways in the rear of the property out of, out of view from the street.
I thought the same thing, and then I was looking at all the driveways on the other side of the street, but I, I still feel like that's a better solution going along the back, and I, I thought about, these are also large lots, so nobody's going to be backing out, but it, it made me think about some of the subdivisions that we approved where there were small lots, and it was just straight in and out, and people are backing out onto that, near the, the sycrophils, and just, how can we prevent ourselves from doing that?
Well, when they do their, their site prep, they can probably cut some banks down and remove a few trees and get to where they have a decent line of vision, I would hope.
Yes, sir. Any other questions for staff?
Thank you very much, thank you. All right, would anybody like to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Captain Arnold, Dewberry Engineers.
Yes, ma'am.
If you have any questions, I'll have to answer them. I'm not authorized, since this has not come up, to commit to the access road, I think there are some significant trees, but I'll certainly bring it back as a recommendation to look at.
Well, it's not necessarily a recommendation, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm just sitting here for five minutes, and it may be a crazy, you know, request, and it might be a lot better.
I think there were some significant trees in this section, if I recall, which may have made it difficult, but we can bring it back.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
I did have one. So, there's the potential for a sidewalk to extend all the way down Parker Road, and it would be, we'll call it a multipurpose, for lack of a better term, it won't be as wide as it is over there, the sidewalk that goes in front of Publix, or you're wearing that, the bridge, I think that may be six or eight feet wide, but it would be as wide as the sidewalk on scenic, for sure. And Hunter, you were going to give me the width of that?
Five foot, I believe.
I did not, well, so, five foot is proposed within this project, I did not get an answer back, it was after four, on what are proposed, but I did, if, if you discuss that, I think it can, we don't have a standard for five foot, so if it's six foot, you can, to match whatever that feature...
So, my question was, if there's a sidewalk that goes down Parker, is the owner willing to match the width of that sidewalk, so we don't have some...
I don't think he's going to squabble over one foot.
Yeah, and we're talking at most one foot.
I'll let him come talk with you about that, yes, sir.
Yeah, and I know he's aware of this, I know the mayor's spoken to him about this, but I wanted to get it out there.
We wanted to not do the sidewalk, obviously, that was not a desire from the planning commission when we did the rezoning, and so we've made a notation on the plat that the sidewalks had to be installed, so we understand that that has to be done.
Okay.
I don't think a foot's going to make a difference one way or the other, no, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, would anybody from the public wish to speak to this item?
Good evening, everybody, my name is David Dwork, for the record, D W O R K. I'm at seventy-three fourteen JV Cummings Lane or Road, which is in the Flying Creek POA, which is at the farthest right part of the diagram as you see, and I actually own the property that is just inside in the bottom right corner. What you don't see on that plat right there that concerns me incredibly is that you do not see the elevations. You're talking about at the top of the, of the running there, near eighty feet above sea level, and again, I know it drops down in my yard, down to about thirty feet above sea level. We're talking about a lot of water runoff that will be going through this area, especially once the houses in the streets are done. The second thing that concerns me, as you drive up through that area, you know that as a blind corner coming up out of the city, which is used highly by everybody coming this way. No one's going to want a house facing the bay, but you have the driveway in the back, so if you put your driveways in the front, you're talking about a very dangerous method that is here, you know? So, you've got the water runoff is one concern, you've got the blind driveway in the back. The third concern is that when this was initially proposed, that we'd have a better offset from the back, as you see in Lot Four. Lot Four is now a buffer of only ten feet to meet through R1 regulation. That is not enough offset as what was promised as before. I am not opposed to the development of this area, but I believe a keyhole entrance for all four properties from the Parker Road, as opposed to anything that faces, this will still give you four pieces of property that will be able to be still within the area, provide a safer turn-in and turn-out lane that we've been talking about. It will provide a little bit of water maintenance that we already have a problem with over in our development, with water runoff from the higher areas right there, that we have just had another project done. I know the cost of asphalt and curbing is not that much, because we just got finished doing our own project, being it's a private development. So, that little bit of expense will save the safety of your people and your citizens by putting the keyhole in there, plus it will protect the properties' values of what we have, within our development itself, let alone Charbonne, which is half-city and still half-county down in that area, will have an incredible water runoff that needs to go somewhere. And right now, that empties into the Street of Charbonne, which is on the south side of what you see in that, and then it goes into another property before it goes down into Fly Creek, all unretained, all un, with, without any kind of flow restrictions at all. And those are my concerns, and I wish that, I'm not against the development of the property, but I wish my concern is that the way it is set up right now does not provide for our scenic beauty and retaining of trees, and to provide for the safety of our community of not having something as a small expense of a keyhole that could put two properties right off the front, and two corners on the corner, and everybody has an offset, and then we have worry we take care of everything in this community. And that's my concern, not against, but I think that layout right there for the subdivision does not work. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to this item? All right, in that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and turn the meeting over to the commissioners.
Are the drainage easements shown on this, I think they are, shown in terms of, you know, drainage concerns, I'm looking at the first plat.
Yes, they have the fifteen-foot drainage and utility easements along the rear and side lot lines.
Just to be clear, you know, when we, this is a minor subdivision, so it's that five or more that hits, okay, you've got to actually do detention and do the, that hits that next threshold, so I want to make sure the audience understands that.
Well, that's another issue about trying to access off the rear, is that would probably make this become a major subdivision.
I'd like to hear from the engineer.
It's running public roads, so I think you could allow the rear access without triggering the, the, the private road issue.
It'd be a private driveway.
And have an access.
Not a full twenty-two-foot wide road with curb and gutter and all that, it would be designed by whoever, whichever one came in first, how the developer wanted to go in, so right now it's forty-foot wide, so there's room inside of what's there if it was extended, to maneuver around trees that were there, or anything like that.
Mike, do you have anything that has the tree plant on?
Man, I know we submitted, I just didn't know if it was here.
I do not.
There is a topo.
We would be happy to work, you know, it can be, we ended up pretty big lot, a lot of billable areas, so that there could be a shared easement that we can do now the trees, we can work with that, so it doesn't, not everything has to be right angles.
The tree plant is inside all the packets.
Yes, yes. Very nice plant.
Oh, okay, they just look so tiny. Whenever you have a symbol for a twenty-foot diameter tree, it's fine.
I did, yeah.
What was the, what was the proposed plan that we had before this, was it five?
It was a PUD that had eight lots.
Eight, okay, and that's when it had the little cul-de-sac key entry in it.
Had a small cul-de-sac that went into eight smaller lots.
Right.
Yeah, so this...
There's a couple of trees that we're going to...
I've emailed the owner, asking if that's a commitment that he's able to make right now, I don't know if I'm going to be able to get him on text while we're doing this meeting, but we did discuss that as something to look for, as a suggestion. As far as the drainage goes, I don't think it would be unreasonable at the site of the building application to look at the water flow model when we pull a permit, and just make sure that the city feels comfortable, just like you do with all the other site plans, to make sure that there's not an undue burden, so that, you know, kind of we understand and are addressing that there's a potential concern, looking at the topo, I don't know if they're going to do stem walls, I don't know what house is going to be put on these lots, so I, there are a lot of variables that I can't speak to tonight, but I, but that would be something that we'd be willing to do, to try to just make sure that we all know that drainage is a huge concern in our area, and we could look at that.
Commissioner Cortina, we could add a note to the plat that says that a drainage study or will be designed by an engineer at the time of... study will be designed by an engineer at the time of building permit?
I cannot believe I'm going to say this, and I fight against notes on plats at the time of permitting. I have had very heated conversations with both Hunter and Mike, but the fact is, we've got forty thousand square foot lots. I would love to have forty thousand square foot lots all over town, you know, and in other areas, they're fitting four houses on each of these are now lots. Yes, I have no problem with at the time of permitting for Lot Four, that they have to submit an engineered drainage plan. The biggest thing with a forty thousand square foot lot, it's not going to be wall-to-wall impervious surface. You're going to have a lot of natural area on that lot, so it's not, it would be, I would think, fairly easy to account for water coming off of paving or houses, but have them produce a, a site-specific engineering plan to be able to direct water. That'd be a great place in that back area for maybe some rain gardens or some LID stuff. I mean, that would work well. You know, I would not at all be opposed to that, and don't make a habit of it, so, yes.
Well, this one could only come back for one more lot. You know, the way that these lots, with the width and the, the way the roads lie and the width of these lots, they could come back and re-subdivide Lot Number One, but I don't think any of the other lots could be subdivided again after this.
Is this square foot?
Big enough.
Forty.
We don't have to get in the weeds on that, but I think they could probably redo Number One into Two, but I don't think the others are all too narrow on the, on the road front side, so it's not like we have to worry about this one turning into sixteen more lots.
Would it not change it from a minor subdivision, though, if you added a lot? So, then the, then the, all of those, what are the LID?
The way that we're written, they can come back. I mean, that's my whole point about this, you know, like when the guy came in with Bayview, you know, I mean, this is a minor subdivision, and, you know, they could come in and do Lot One into four lots, once we approve this, you know, and that's.
Yeah, that's why I say we've got to have something in place to prevent the continuing subdividing that says if you go beyond what the intent was in the original subdividing, it all reverses back to the previous state. That's the only way to fix that.
Or at least, the next, you know, four coming in, then one, you have to now meet the requirements of a major subdivision.
Got to do it, we got to do it. We can't do it fast enough.
Yeah, I agree. So, anyway, Jack, I think in a motion, we could require a lot being, I mean, the sidewalk being a minimum of six feet. The sidewalks around downtown, like on Morphe, Fairhope Avenue, they're all five feet, so if the one looks a little bit bigger, that one foot makes a big difference if somebody's going to be riding a bike or whatever, but you could put in a motion requirement of a sidewalk of at least six feet.
Might recommend to match whatever we're doing. We don't have that dimension.
Okay.
Obviously, if it's twelve feet, we're probably going to work with it.
I don't want to over-require, right?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Let's just say to match whatever.
I don't think across the street it's six feet, because it seems kind of narrow.
Yeah.
Well, it's a, this would be a new sidewalk that's coming from Ninety-Eight. So, and I don't have the, I didn't get the dimension of that before the meeting.
Ma'am, the public hearing's closed, but if you have one quick question, I'll entertain it.
Yeah, I have a question about the drainage.
Okay, we've answered that, thank you. That's good. We're saying that on the lot, what he is requiring is that on Lot Number Four, that a plat be made to have an engineer, a, to have an engineer review and make sure that there are no adverse reactions with the drainage.
Will we get notice of what?
No, ma'am.
It's just going to happen, and it will happen whatever.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Yeah, we, if you come and get a building permit to do something in your yard, we're going to make sure you follow the rules, but we're not going to go take it to all the neighbors for approval.
I know, but if you're, but the water leaving their lot is trespassing onto my lot, so I guess.
It's not trespass on your lot, the same amount of water before is allowed afterwards. That's just how, how the law is.
Do you understand how that would be if it's more impervious?
Well, your waters, are you keeping all your water on your lot when it rains, or does it leave your lot?
Why?
Well, it eventually goes to somebody else's. The point being, they can't divert it, they can't have more water go on your house after the construction than prior, so that's what the engineer will look at.
And the, and the engineer has to approve that, and they put their reputation on the line, and so, no, you won't get notification, but that engineer's license is on the line, so there's repercussions for not abiding by that plan.
And in just looking at the, I pulled up the contours, I, I don't know how accurate it is, the drop on your, the drop starts on your lot coming across, I mean, it's got a, it's got a taper, and it, and it drops coming off of this property, but it looks like you've got a heavy drop when you get into your backyard. Is that right, in your topography? Okay. So, along that, what would be the south, southeastern lot line of four, if, if they took some measures in that area to try to capture or slow it down or handle it at that point, that's about going to be the best that you're going to get, in, in any way. But once again, it's a forty thousand square foot lot, I cannot imagine, I mean, even if they build a big house, it's not going to have that much adverse effect on a lot that big. I mean, that thing's almost four hundred feet deep, so that's still going to be a lot of green area, that's going to be a lot of area to soak up rain, so we will make sure that we get an engineered sealed plan when they do their building permit, which we've done on others. I mean, we've required that on others where we have a known drainage problem, so we'll handle it on this one as well.
All right. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion. If there are no further questions for staff, or?
If the planning commissioner chooses, that would need to be added in a motion. Or in a condition for the drainage plan.
And the sidewalk, don't forget about, to have the sidewalk of the same width of the, the Parker, future Parker Road sidewalk to be built.
Okay. I will make a motion to require, for approval, with requirement that the sidewalks match the existing sidewalks it'll be tying into, and that an engineered drainage plan be provided at building permit time for Lot Four.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I've got a motion in a second to approve the subdivision, subject to the sidewalk matching the sidewalk, any sidewalk it's connecting to, as well as Lot Four having an engineered stormwater plan at time of, at time of permitting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
I do, I do want one discussion we're able to discuss after, correct? Isn't that how the protocol goes? Isn't that right?
I think it's further discussion.
Further discussion. I, I do like his idea of the keyhole, of some kind of bringing the drives in off of Parker rather than the busy. We have so many pedestrians on Scenic Ninety-Eight, I would, the biking, the walking, I would hate to have traffic impeding on that. I know that Parker, I love that they're watching the speed of Parker and slowing that down, but I feel like, from a safety aspect, the, the ingress and egress off of Parker would be, to me, my thoughts, a, a better assessment.
We will discuss that with, with applicant, I think we were just doing that, so, and I do think it makes a lot of common sense to, to access that, so we'll discuss that, see how viable an option that is. Okay? And you did close everything?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, this is a subdivision regulation amendment, very minor. The, we, as planning commission knows, we made a lot of amendments last month to clarify some jurisdictional issues. We, we left something out of appendix. All that is, is the certifications that make its way onto a final plat, that is appendix I. So, as we were looking through those, and there, there's sample certificates as well, so we provide a template, and then it gets put on a final plat, and we review that language and, before we sign. So, appendix I, as an example, we changed some, pro project or to subdivide or to coincide. I do want, so the resolution here, you see the red lines in your packet, some of it's just adding commentary to, to instructions for filling this out. This is not a regulatory appendix, it is suggested samples, so we have some consistency. So, we are asking for this amendment to clear it up, but in Note Two here, we are asking as staff to grant us the authority within this resolution to make future, to appendix B, without having to come back to you. An example, we had to come back to you a year ago when we started adding nine-one-one signatures to the plat. You know, this is, this is something we're changing anyway, as, as each case fits, so would ask that we make that resolution with the red lines you see tonight, but in the future, not having to bring this one to.
Sounds good. Any questions for Hunter at this time?
Should be an awesome public hearing.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? All right. Larry's stretched his legs.
We'll never approve anything you bring back up.
All right, in that case, I'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
A move to approve SD twenty-three oh-nine, accept the resolution for the proposed amendment changes to the City of Fairhope subdivision regulations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion, and under further discussion, this does end here, since this is part of the subdivision regulations, it will not go to City Council, it'll, this will be the final vote. Any other further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, last item, well, last item on the regular agenda, ZC twenty-three oh-two, public hearing to consider the request of Shannon Hesse and Ron Norton, acting on behalf of the owners, Margaret and James Smith, to rezone from R2 to R1, five-point-one-nine acres located east of Onx Lane and north of Longleaf Lane.
Casey thought I was about to present this, but this is Casey's case, this is the last one she's going to present for us. Friday will be her last day, so I want to thank her again, but you got to come up here and handle this last one.
Yes, I do, I want her, she's done a phenomenal job, hate to lose her, and wish her luck with the Corps of Engineers.
Oh, wow.
Yay, congrats.
Congrats. And don't screw it up from her first impressions and last impressions.
Thanks, appreciate that. All right, so Shannon Hesse and Ron Norton are the applicants, acting on behalf of the owners, James and Margaret Smith, and they're requesting to rezone the property from R2 to R1, both single-family residential districts. The property is approximately five-point-one-nine acres and is located east of Monix Lane and north of Longleaf Lane. So, here we have the contextual maps, we've got the zoning of the property, as well as its surrounding properties, as well as an aerial. So, as I said, the subject property is currently zoned R2, and is located within the City of Fairhope's municipal limits. It is bordered to the northwest and south by properties zoned PUD, and the property zoned to the east is zoned RSFE by Baldwin County. So, according to the comprehensive plan, the property is located near a commercial node, and it specifically says that density should decrease as you move further from the center of a node, and the application requests to downzone the subject property from a higher-density zoning to a lower-density zoning, so staff believes that the rezoning request complies with the 2015 comprehensive plan. So, it's important to note that a portion of the adjacent property to the east is in the process of being annexed into the City of Fairhope with R1 zoning designation. Their intent is to conduct a replat of their common property line, so you can kind of see the blue is the subject property, as is today, and then the orange is the proposed property being annexed and replatted. So, staff recommends case ZC twenty-three point oh-two, one-zero-one-three, one-zero-three-one-five Longleaf Drive be approved with the initial zoning of R1, low-density, single-family residential district. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff at this time? Thank you, Casey, you did a marvelous job.
Thank you, Casey.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. This is something that we see about every three years, somebody going from an R2 to an R1, usually there's no reason to, but in this case, since they want to add on a little bit of the land to the east, and that land is not zoned, if land comes into the city, it automatically comes R1, so they are doing this so that the two zonings conform to each other, and they can increase the size of this lot. So, anybody in the public wish to speak to this item? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
You need to come up and state your name and your address on the microphone?
I'm Amy Paulson. I didn't mean to be here officially. Oh, you want my address?
I know, but our secretary has to have it.
Yep, I live at eight-oh-nine Dera Street in Fairhope, and I'm speaking on behalf of my parents who live on Fortune Drive, which I think backs up to this, this area. Sorry, you hear me now? I'm just saying, I'm speaking on behalf of my parents who live on Fortune Drive, which backs up to that area. I'm just curious about the definitions between, the difference between medium-density and low-density homes, and if there's an anticipation.
And I don't normally like to answer the questions, because I don't want to feel like I'm selling, or, you know, pro or con the, the request, but in this one, I could probably say I'd be pro it, because there's really not a downside. The, the R1 and R2 are both single-family, single-family zoning districts, and the main difference, without going into, getting in all the weeds, is that R1 has a larger size, I believe fifteen thousand square feet, and a larger minimum lot width of a hundred versus R2, which I believe is seventy-five and eleven-five or twelve-five, something like that.
Ten-five.
Ten-five, so basically, the R1 lots, the only difference in the two zonings, is that the R1 lots are required to be larger.
Okay, it seemed like a good thing. I just wanted, I was just clarifying.
No, that's, that's, when something looks too good to be true, you always ask the question, like, I don't see very many of these, so.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good thing, and generally, not that this, we're voting, but we like it, so, thanks.
And I will also say, I mean, the applicant is, has no intentions of making them fifty-thousand, fifteen thousand square foot lots. They are intending to keep this five, a five-acre. Y'all know it's a zoning, so we can't dictate that in the future, but there is not even a road, a real road that accesses this lot right now, there's some access easements, so I think we're a little safe for some, some time of this turning into multiple lots.
Right. Anybody else wish to speak to this item?
I'm Shannon Hesse, I'm representing the buyer. All he wants, he's not going to do anything but buy the house from the Smiths, and the one acre, I mean, you know, they were going to give him a whole lease for his whole life, but that would have been too easy, so he just wants that acre. Should the Smiths' daughter, who owns the adjacent property, choose to build a house in the future, he'll have the buffer, that's all it is, so he's not going to do anything with it. He's not going to build, there'll be nothing, you'll notice nothing different, so.
This was, this was a challenge, a little bit, because you want to work to not make this take three months, but it is affecting the corporate limits boundary, and we had to do things the right way, so the quickest path was to downzone their existing property so that the annexation can come in as a straight, of the one acre, as a straight R1, and then we will intend to do a replat that will merge those two pieces together, so there's one large lot, or move a lot line, just so everybody's aware.
Just to speak to Amy's parents' question from one step back, if, you know, the current owner decides to sell it in the future, or whatever, the R1 zoning has exactly the same allowed uses as R2, so, I mean, just to make a finer point, to the same, just bigger lots.
That's what I said. I'm joking. All right, any, any other questions? Yes, ma'am, if you'll come up and state your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Connie Spearance, that's Billy Pitts, we live in the neighborhood. My house is the last house on Turquoise, and there's a cul-de-sac, well, it's actually just some parking places, and my big concern is Longleaf was closed when that subdivision was built. Now, are they planning on opening up another road there, and then there's another one that's going to open up? It says future road to that subdivision, so, I mean, I'm here, here's a road, here's a road, and then another road, so we're sitting out in the middle of streets that are going to become more active with building trucks and affecting our property value.
Well, in this case, they're asking for an R2 to an R1 zoning, and they're not coming back and asking for a building permit at this point.
back and asking for a building permit at this point. They're not asking for any houses at this point. Now, whoever's buying this could have a heart attack tomorrow, and this property could go on the market and have a subdivision the next day, who knows? But we're only voting on whether or not we should rezone this from R2 to R1.
To R1.
And anybody who lives around there is concerned about ingress egress and traffic would be supportive of this. Now, as far as, is somebody gonna connect to that? I'd assume if somebody owns that, is gonna build a house, they want to get to their house, and I think it's their private property rights to do that, just as, you know, you've got a driveway going to yours and a road at some point getting there, so.
There's an existing house on the property.
Yeah, so what they come back and ask for, how they get in, get out, ingress egress, I mean, any future permits, you know, or subdivisions will come back.
Well, there is a road. I mean, you can come down, uh, Turquoise Drive and reach that, but.
Maybe you have nothing to worry about with it, I don't know.
So we would be informed in the future of any subdivision going in there and any new roads so that we could come and voice our concerns?
As far as any new subdivisions, um, there would be notice posted, Fairhope posted that. As far as new roads, I, I don't know what the requirement would be if somebody wanted to connect a road for themselves there. I'm not sure if you'd be, you know, if, if you'd be notified of that or not, I just don't know.
So the only thing where y'all are voting on tonight is to make that City of Fairhope...
No, ma'am, what we're voting on is whether or not for this one parcel to change it from R2 to R1, and we're not even voting for that, we're making a vote to recommend to the City Council to make, to rezone this from R2 to R1. This is an actual, will be an ordinance, and we don't have the authority here to enact an ordinance, so we'll make a motion to recommend to City Council, and eventually Jack's vote will be the only one of any of ours that counts. They'll look, look at our recommendation, and if everything looks hunky-dory, they'll probably carte blanche approve it if something comes out that they think about, that maybe makes some kind of a legal issue, then they could do whatever they want.
Well, I know that they've had to send the county for one garbage can and one trash pickup, and I was talking to the gentleman the other day, he said, we come out here for one house, and that's what they were concerned about.
Well, with our new county-city arrangement, there's gonna be quite a bit of that, so.
Well, we did bring that up. It would have been probably easier to bring the other property into the city.
Yeah.
That property owner did not want to do that.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to let our homeowners association know, we're not gonna have concrete trucks coming right now.
Not yet.
Death row street. Thank you all.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the meeting over to the commissioners.
Actually, two, two in one night, PUD to R1 and R2 to R1. Extremely rare, it's really a best-case scenario.
I don't know, I kind of, in hindsight, kind of preferred the PUD to the three ha- to the two houses coming out on that blind curve.
Kind of agree with Eric's thought, that those lots are so huge that.
Oh, I, no, I agree, I'm just talking about, I'm just talking about the ingress egress. It's not only, I agree with the, I love big lots, don't get me wrong, I'm just saying, just those, those two concern me.
I think you would have found resistance if it ate lots versus four.
I agree, but I'm gonna go by and look at, hopefully when they grade it, but I'm off the subject, it'll all be cool. All right, I'll accept the motion. If there are no further questions for staff or anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, uh, approval to the City Council to vote on this, uh, rezoning of, for ZC 2302, 10315, Longleaf Drive.
Okay, I've got a, um.
Second.
A motion to recommend to City Council to approve the rezoning from R2 to R1 for ZC 2302, and I have a second from Rebecca. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, old, new business. First time on old business is Overland Phase Two request of the applicant for a one-year extension.
Okay. Uh, let's see, we have old new business, so there's the, I'll, I'll introduce kind of, uh, the extension here for Overland. Give just a second. You sure you don't want to come into the city?
That's right, that's right.
I have me too.
I'm the Jim Smith that's involved.
If any was a slam dunk, it was.
If I remember correctly, I used to sit there as a city judge.
I had to change the chair out.
And if I remember, if I remember, I don't blame, if I remember correctly, the reason we have this problem is because Jim Reed, the former city judge, most recently a circuit judge, was kind of campaigning, me follow him as, as city judge, and Mike Ford said, the city judge ought to live in the city limits. And at that time, there was nothing out there that was city limits, except Quail Creek Golf Course, so we annexed the, to be contiguous, we had a 20-foot strip going to Quail Creek to put out five acres where the house is in, in the, in the city. And done me, I didn't realize it was coming in, I should have, I'm an attorney, but it came in as R2, if I had a, if I had any idea what was gonna go on, it would come in as R1. I don't think anybody plans to subdivide you that. Anyway.
That's a charming.
My, my, y'all have, I've been very impressed with the village y'all have, and my condolences for having to sit in the middle of that thing now. I did that for a long time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
You know, when somebody's saying nice stuff to you, it's never out of order, by the way, just because it's so rare.
Right, we're, we're at a transition point to that. All right, um. So old, new business, uh, the first one is Overland Phase Two, just to tee it up, and I'll let Larry speak to it. This is the conditions that were approved, um, in previously, um, and for reference, there's the, the slide of what Phase Two looks like, so if y'all have any questions. This is a recommendation for Phase Two to a one-year extension, I believe, and we did have kind of a, there's a brief 30-second aerial shot of the, um, the plans, or the aerial.
All right, um, so as y'all, most of y'all are very well, well aware, this came in for Phase One approval, um, towards the end of last year. Um, I don't know what that is. And at that point, um, there was a, um, condition put onto the, our condition put on the approval of the final plat that fa- the boardwalk and trails be constructed, and, um, you know, as y'all are aware that, um, we've been working through that, at least some of y'all are probably aware of being working through that, part of the trail system has been installed. The only, the issue that we've had is getting the core permit to actually work within the wetlands. Um, on February 27th, we finally got the notice to proceed from the core, the no permit required, and we've actually gone in, or we, the developer's gone under contract with the contractor to start the construction of that. So just wanted to briefly run through everything. Um, we've got some aerials that were actually taken today, and that's why if we didn't get this to Hunter earlier to be able to, um, get it in y'all's package, but, um, you know, that section that's highlighted has been constructed now, and we've got an aerial of that. We received the core clearance to proceed on 2/27, just to kind of give y'all an update what's going on there. After, we kept pushing them and pushing them after the last planning commission meeting where Phase One was approved, they finally informed us that their directive is not to review any no permit required until they get the backlog of everything else that do require permits. So what they've said is, the directive they're giving is, if you submit for a no permit required and you follow the guidelines of the no permit required, then you can proceed. And the, we've got that email that we can provide, Eric, whenever the building permit's pulled, um, from the Corps of Engineers. And so I know Arthur's not here, Art's not here to, to hound on it, but he, I know he can't stand when we bring multiple phases in at one time. We've, you know, kind of explained the developer's standpoint on this, just to let y'all know, they're not sitting on Phase Two. It is actually out for bid right now, and those lots are needed and they're ready to start building on Phase Two if we receive this approval for the extension tonight. Um, and this is that email that we are referring to here. That section that you can kind of see in red is where the boardwalk is. It's also our access walking path to get to the other side of the trail system that will be constructed as soon as we can, and then will be the, one of the first things that we get started on out there. Like I said, they've already signed the contract for the remainder of it, they've done the first section. You can see the pathway now leading up to the wetland buffer, and right now, we're stopped there, and we will proceed on with the rest of that work. Um, there's just some other aerial shots that were taken of the development. That is not a trail system, it threw me off when I saw the aerial, too, that's just silt fence around stockpiles, so I, I looked at it like we didn't have trails there. That stockpile material, that will be used for fill in Phase Two. And y'all saw this a second ago, this was the Phase Two, that was previously approved, and I gladly answer any questions that y'all have.
Any questions for the developer at this time?
The only question, I know we needed a no rise. Have we received that, and I'm, you're gonna, I'm, I'm trying to go back in the Wayback Machine, did we get that with the original, with the initial? I'll pull, I'll pull it and look at it again, okay.
Did any include the boardwalk?
Yeah, it was the no rise, that was, that's what it was for, was the boardwalk.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question for you and, and the applicant, I guess. We rotate on and off this commission, so sometimes I, I forget. Why a one-year extension? Is that the, is that what we typically grant, is just in increments of a year?
We typically carte blanche, uh, given a one-year extension. The first one-year extension, um, is pretty much.
Can you give a six-month extension, is that what we're getting at?
There's, there's nothing in writing that we do, we've just traditionally, traditionally we've just, you know, following what Art says about what we do for one, we do for the other. We've typically done a, you know, kind of a carte blanche if they're working on it, making a good faith effort and they're out there, not if they've just disappeared and done, and ghosted and done nothing, then all bets are off, but when they're out there and they're working on it, they're going forward, we typically give a carte blanche one-year extension because even though, you know, Art complains some, it's nice when somebody's gonna do a multi-phase plan to kind of see at the beginning what all the different phases are. Now, if it's a five-phase plan that's gonna go over 15 years, you can be pretty much guaranteed that by the time you get to number five, something's gonna change, but at least, you know, they're making a good faith effort of telling you what they're intending to do.
And is this the first extension?
That's correct.
And if we did something shorter, we'd, would have to come back, because there's not any way they'd actually be ready in six months for a final plat. I mean, even if they broke ground tomorrow, it typically takes for something this size at least eight months to be able to construct.
My, my biggest concern is more, will we be done in a year? More than six months.
Yeah, I mean, and that, that's not only finish the construction, do the inspection, then they sign off on everything. It takes at least a year, um, normally for this process to pan out.
And the idea has always been.
We, we send it out for, no, uh, wait, which part? The boardwalk has been, is under contract. Phase Two is out for bid right now.
Do you have an anticipated start? Because we'll, once we get the revised, any revised plans, we'll have to have pre-construction meetings, have any anticipated start of construction.
Uh, with the current bid schedule, they should have a contract, assuming everything comes in budget, um, by the first of April, and then we'd probably be scheduling a pre-con somewhere about mid-April, I'd assume.
Okay, so that could be feasible to get done within a year.
Yeah, just going back up to 30,000 square feet, you know, kind of, the reason we do it the way we do it is if it's been approved recently, it's hopefully a good project, and hopefully, you know, it's fairly close to what we've, you know, been asking and requiring. If they've done absolutely nothing, the reason that we don't give that carte blanche approval is we don't want at some point, if we're gonna change some major subdivision regulations, to get 50 people to come in with halfway put-together subdivisions to try to get in under the old recommendations and then do nothing for five years, you know, and those types of cases, we want to then have the ability to, you know, when somebody's done absolutely nothing, made no effort, say, hey, sorry, you know, you haven't started, so the new subdivision regulations are now the ones that you have to abide by. But in this case, I don't think we've really made any significant changes in the past since this has been done. All right, any further?
And there's an overriding P, remember, this does have an overriding PU, the PUD that dictates the plat layout and all of the standards.
And does this go to City Council or this stays here, even though it's, okay. Do I have a motion?
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
What do we have, what stimulations or stipulations do we have on amenities for development? When do those come for the people that are living there, that get to enjoy them, rather than the, that amenity coming last five years, and we need another extension, we need another extension, and they're paying the HOA for the amenities that they don't have?
That, great question, and I'm glad you asked it. I think we, this is, it goes back, Lee and I have actually had this conversation where it was very clear, um, in years past, when amenities are in, and it's tied to the phase that's being constructed, and a lot of amenities, you know, on the first phase of construction, that's something we require. Uh, this did get discussed for the, the boardwalk at the last meeting and was allowed to move into Phase Two, but I want to emphasize, any amenities are, are on the front end, we're wanting to front-load those, so they don't sit, uh, people move in, second phases didn't get done, at minimum, the amenities within a phase, and you'll hear some conversations about that probably coming next month.
Oh, that's a great question, we should always require that. We were talking, Hunter and I, before this meeting, um, is it Battles, what is it, Battles Village?
Old Battles Village.
Oh, Battles Village, when the first iteration of that came, there were gonna be 12 tennis courts, uh, two swimming pools, and a racquetball room, and a fitness facility, and, you know, they did a few lots, and then it went into bankruptcy, another got purchased, another got purchased, but, you know, we've seen that a lot, so we should always require those amenities to be on the front end of that. If it has anything to do with our decision-making and, and green space and, you know, way of life, we should always have those put in on the front end.
And I want to preface, you know, the conversation we'll probably have, I, I do support that wholly, fully, amenities. Um, we're, we're probably gonna need to look at when there's buildings involved, um, some, some different allowances, because under, uh, infrastructure site plan, you know, when under construction, it's sometimes hard to get everything finished on a building when you don't have the infrastructure in place. So we're gonna need, I'm, I'm gonna, I want to preface some future conversations right now, saying I want to clarify some, some distinctions there when we're talking about vertical occupied structures versus amenities that might be included. You know, if you have a pool, that can be constructed and, and, but maybe the poolhouse can't be certified occupied, CO can't be given by the time we're finalizing a plat.
But it would be finished before somebody moved into, built a house and moved into a house.
That's where we need to have the construction.
That's the goal, you don't have people living there without the amenity.
That's the, that's where we need to have the conversation and where, how to, what, what is that? Because it can't be done at final plat. You can't get sprinkler systems in that may be required or, or other things, or water supply's not there, um, so.
Yeah.
And, and it really needs to be almost designed in the phasing, um, so.
And I get the core.
He keeps making at me because we're bringing this question to y'all next month because of these issues, because how do you go vertical when you don't have fire protection? How do you go vertical when you don't have a fire access road? Those kind of questions that we've been posing to Hunter, and, you know, he's like, well, we need to bring this before the planning commission, so we're, we're bringing that because we, we want to make sure we don't end up where we are here today in the future, and we want to go and hash these items out ahead of time, and so, um, that, that was our main concern, is how, how to word and make sure that we're all on the same page at the end of the day.
Well, so just to be clear, though, you wouldn't, if this wasn't a Corps of Engineer permit, we wouldn't be here, right? Or is that correct, that we're here basically because of that?
On this, on this one, it was our interpretation all along that that was a Phase Two amenity until we came to the planning commission that night.
I remember that.
Yeah, until we came to the planning commission for the final plat approval, it, we never anticipated on putting it into Phase One, um, but yes, that is what's held us up. This is not a fire protection issue, this is, we can't get to the wetlands until we either get the no- either get the no permit required letter, or we get a core permit.
But so, but you found out about it when we came here last time, but my point was it might have been, you might have been able to do it in between that time, you might not be asking for this extension.
Well, the extension is for Phase Two of the subdivision.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah.
When we heard this previously, the PUD, the initial goal was like, have all this ready in eight months. So there were economic decisions to delay, not just the permitting from the developer's side.
Okay.
So, you know, but we did support moving the, during the meeting, support moving this work into Phase Two for the boardwalk.
All right, any further questions, or I don't entertain a motion?
I move that we give a one-year extension for final plat approval of SD 2121.
I've got a motion for a one-year extension, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
All right, and we have one more extension request. Let's see, John, can you help me, can you get me back into the, I think that's gonna start there. There we go. Okay, so this is another extension request. Y'all know this is Carmel Park Flats, it's the apartments on Twin Beach in Thompson Hall. It's been, been two years, the request is coming in for an extension. I can tell you, they're, they're underway very heavily. So we do recommend the extension. Got a letter last week, and we spoke with the engineer a month or so ago, not sure about timing. So I want to use this opportunity, if there's questions about the extension, we can certainly do that, but I want to spend some time, and the motion and the conditions of those approval are on the screen if we need to look at it. But we, we've got a little bit of a challenge in the way we typically would handle things here, because if you remember, this project came in as a city approved project under the jurisdiction, and not long after that, the state law came into effect that said no standalone ordinances apply. So things like our wetland ordinance, our tree ordinance, those things do not apply. The request with the one-year extension was also, there's 13 trees that are slated to be saved on site, and they've requested that they remove those 13 trees, we'll look at those in a little zoom in, and replace those with 35 additional trees. And there's the letter with a plan, if you can make sure everybody gets a copy of that. So I do want to just quickly say, because this is something, I don't know if it's speed or coordination, you know, a lot of times we get landscape plans separate from engineering plans, and certainly SE Civil is not the only one. This is, this has been a repeating thing from many projects. When people are doing a grading plan, not actually considering what a tree actually, you know, impacts, it's not a, by scale, a one-foot circle, it's got a root zone, it's got a canopy, so, you know, I really want to make sure, and this is something we've really been hammering home, we, it changed the complete design of the Ottawa that just received a zoning change, saving some trees. So the request is to, to replace some of these trees, we don't have access to our tree ordinance here. The state law said cannot do that.
This is 13 out of how many trees that were supposed to be saved?
Uh, the red, let's go back here, the red X's you see are the ones that were proposed to be removed. I don't have total numbers. I don't know if y'all have those on.
Where are they? This request is put in.
Oh.
And the greens are the ones that are.
Yeah, we'll zoom in, so.
Greens to be planted.
The green, the red X, we all approved those to be removed in the, in the first plan. Green are be, to be saved, and then the ones highlighted are to be removed. We can get into details on what trees are, but the main thing I want to talk to Planning Commission about, without that tree ordinance, the only thing allowing this to be discussed on anything that changes the plan that's discussed, is, is the Planning Commission. So you have at your disposal, if you want us to confer with the Tree Committee, if you want us to sit, and we can debate this for a while on what to do with each tree, but our normal means to go to a horticulturist or Tree Committee is not there because of the tree ordinance.
Can we make a motion to approve the extension, subject to the, our city horticulturist approving which of the, which, if any of the 13 trees can be taken down?
I think so, Chris, is, you okay with that? It's not referencing the tree ordinance. They are looking at.
Just a, just a, subject to our horticulturist, you know, approving which of the 13 trees are allowed to be brought down?
Since the request and the extension, I think you can, I can, I think you can include that.
So the whole reason for the extension is because we don't have, we can't go by our tree ordinance?
No, two separate things. So the extension is, you know, there's been some delays, it was the developer sold it to another group, and then some construction delays. Remember, the CEOs of these buildings are also tied to the Twin Beach roundabout, so they can open within the next, you know, few months anyway. And then on top of that, just got this notice in, and I just, what is the direction here? Because I don't see any way I can make any changes, and I'm being asked to approve the removal of these trees. It's an approved plan, where normally I could go to, by the tree ordinance, to go to the horticulturist and give me some advice.
And a lot of times in a project this size, you know, you do your best-case effort, but when it comes to, you know, digging time, and you look at the way the exact elevations go, you've got a tree that's in an elevation where it's not really gonna work, and you're probably gonna lose the tree, you know, if you're, you know, real strict about it and saying, "No, you gotta leave those three trees there," you know, and they dump four feet of dirt on them, they're gonna die anyway, so.
It looks like that's only one of them, the other one, they're just kind of deciding, I mean, regardless, trust, we have a good arborist.
Yeah, so I just say, "Put it to the arborist," and let them look at it as an individual piece, I don't feel like, in the meeting here, we can make a decision tree by tree.
Yeah, it looks like they're still preserving like 50 to 60 trees, if that's what the green circles mean.
Yeah, we'll be happy to, you know, mitigate that, I'm kind of looking, you know, maybe trees aren't the answer, on the north of that pond, that may be some shrubs that provide a better buffer to the neighbor, and might work on that slope better, but that's something we can certainly look at.
I know I've looked at some of these trees when they first brought it to our attention, and some of them already have heavy damage, not from construction, but from Sally. You know, when we do a tree survey, we typically just go, stick it there, we don't qualify how good the tree is.
You're looking at the health.
Now, I will say, we do have several nice specimen trees on this property, but that is still in the area of where we do not want to touch, which is in this little circular area right here. Oh, my bad, I'll let you drive.
We've got a, I guess, well, no, we didn't.
Here.
It's right on the edge of the screen.
Yeah, go back to the other screen, I'll point it to.
It's in, the specimen trees we've been avoiding this whole time are in that area right there, so all we did was put a little walking trail, a little pavilion that has ADX that has access to it, that's where the really nice trees are. Obviously, we tried to save as many we could along the property for buffering, and that's why they're proposing to replace any of those trees. We're gonna be damaged due to construction, or already damaged from sound.
Lee, I like your idea, I think we just get the city to look at it, then we can leave it out of.
We'll certainly work with them to figure out. I mean, they're already offering 35 trees in replacement, if we can work with the horticulturist to figure out where those are, what species those are, maybe if a shrub provides a better buffer. Because one of the things, when you, as you can see in these pictures, when you take some of that understory out, and it is a damaged tree anyway, it's kind of wide open to some rear yards, so if the developer themselves are, you know, willing to do some shrubs instead of trees, might be a more effective buffer.
And just for clarity of the record, if we can just use a broad term in terms of hort, I'm not sure the title or the position for the.
Horticulturist.
Yeah, horticulturist, or other city representative designated to handle those, you know, horticulture matters, something like that. Just, we're not tied to a title, please.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I don't want to take the, the offer to, to plant 35 additional trees off the table either.
Yeah.
There we go. Yeah, that's, I think that's the minimum we're starting here.
I want that to stay in, regardless, of what the horticulturist says.
You want to go ahead and make the motion, then?
Good point.
I'll let somebody else make it.
All right, I'll entertain a motion, if there are no further questions.
I'll make a motion that we extend one-year final plat MOP for SD 2103 with, with approval of city's horticultural department reviewing additional trees that are on the plat to be, 35 additional trees to be planted, and to look at the removal and approval of the removal of the.
13.
13 other trees. Get that.
Is that clear that we're, that the 35 are required, and that we're just talking about which ones they're removing?
Yes, secretary.
Okay.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I've got an, a motion to approve the one-year extension, and require the 35 additional trees, and a city staff member in the horticultural area to approve which of the 13 trees can be removed. Any further discussion?
All in favor? Are you happy with that?
As happy as I can be.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously, and I think we've got a couple, do y'all have anything you wanted to bring up, or just gluttons for punishment, sitting in the house? It's all right, then.
See, man, see, in that case, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Let's go. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Yes. I never can remember if we.